I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session, held on Tuesday, January 28, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Stewart, and then online, we also have Councilmember Fields, and Councilmember Salahu Dean, and myself, Council President Kritzler. We also are joined by our Mayor Angela Burney, and our planning commissioners tonight. So really looking forward to the evening's agenda. There are five items on the agenda tonight. The joint meeting with the Planning Commission, the Transportation Master Plan Status Update, so some planning commissioners may want to stay and listen to that one, too. Safer Streets Action, Safer Streets for All Action Plan Status Update, Automated Speed Safety Cameras, and Council Talk Time. The first item on the agenda is the joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And I will pass it over to Jeff Churchill with the Department of Planning and Community Development to kick us off.
Great, thank you very much, Council President Kritzler, and good evening, planning commissioners and city council members. Tonight, as a way of stimulating the conversation among commissioners and council members, staff will provide a brief overview of upcoming Review of Design Standards updates. And we are going to ask, what will you be looking for in updates to design standards, especially in the broader update coming next year? And what perspectives do you want to ensure are considered as part of this work? And those questions will actually be on the screen later, so you don't have to remember them. After discussion, the Planning Commission Chair Susan Weston will share the commission's 2025 work program with the city council. All right, so first, I want to put this work in context. The council has already adopted significant revisions to design standards for new building types like towers and to address parking structures in Overlake. And this year, we are focused on compliance with state law concerning objectivity, reorganizing and consolidating design standards in preparation for next year's work, and introducing some elements of universal design work that will also continue next year. And next year, we'll be focused on implementing REVEN 2050, with this year's work serving as a good foundation. Many of you have heard of House Bill 1293 concerning design standards. It calls for clear and objective standards. It requires there to be an ascertainable guideline, standard, or criterion. And it asks cities to avoid design standards that have the effect of reducing density. And the deadline for finishing work to ensure that our design standards are compliant is June 30 of this year. Based on what we've heard from council, the Planning Commission, and the community, staff is approaching this work with several priorities and principles in mind. They start with incorporating the REVEN 2050 themes of equity and inclusion, sustainability, and resiliency into the work. And I think it would be fair to say that that balance of the bulleted list on the screen could be summarized as implementing REVEN 2050 policy priorities that you all reviewed, especially in the second half of 2024. And so those principles are going to guide the work this year and also next year. In 2025, as I said, we're bringing work to align design standards with state statute, to reorganize and consolidate the design standards, and really to lay the foundation for next year's work. All of that is coming to the Planning Commission next month in February and to the council as soon as April. So this slide is a preview of what that work is. There will be updates for building typologies. The council adopted standards for towers, as I said, but will also bring standards for other typologies, like smaller buildings with ornamentation, or we sometimes call them beautiful boxes. We will also propose standards to ensure that passive development forms and designs are accommodated. In addition, there will be new illustrations to support those standards and clear purpose statements that are required by law. In 2026, the council approved one-time funds for professional services to assist city staff in updating design standards more broadly. This biennium, that work will start in 2025. It will reach the council for its formal review in 2026. And it will focus on the policy priorities contained in REVEN 2050 in the comprehensive plan. Those include creating a welcoming and inclusive community, streamlining standards and processes, creating comfortable urban places for people, addressing climate resilience in urban design, and ensuring that the views from public spaces are high quality and contribute to a high quality of life for everyone in our community. So I'll return to the questions I was asking earlier, and these can just be questions that are part of the conversation this evening, and those are, what will you be looking for in updates to design standards, especially in the broader update coming for a formal review next year? And what perspectives do you want to ensure are considered as part of this work? I'll turn it back to the council president.
Thank you so much for that overview. And I realize we didn't have on the agenda an opportunity for each commissioner to briefly introduce themselves. So I would love to go down the line before we get into discussion, for you to just be able to share your name, and maybe how many years you've been on the Planning Commission, and if you have a particular role, like chair, to note that as well. Let's start with Commissioner Van Neumann.
Commissioner Van Neumann, and I believe I have been on the Planning Commission for three years now.
Good evening, I am Commissioner Janine Woodyear. I've been on the Planning Commission for two years now, and I'm the vice chair.
Hi, I'm Susan Weston, Chair of the Planning Commission, and I have been here for two and a half years.
I'm Commissioner Adam Coleman, and I've been here for 11 months, I'm guessing. Close, about a year.
Good evening, my name is Denise Gagnier, and I've been on the Planning Commission since April of last year, so nine or so months.
I've been on the Planning Commission for nine months.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all for introducing yourselves. Now, we can turn over to a little discussion based on the information that was provided. So I'll just ask the questions again, and can ask both council and commissioners to raise your hands and share some thoughts on this. What will you be looking for in updates to design standards, especially in the broader update next year? And what perspectives do you want to ensure are considered as part of this work? Council Vice President Forsyth.
I will go first, since design standards is my jam. So I'm excited about this next section that you all will be working on. A couple of things that I'm interested in hearing from you all about is looking at our sign code. I don't know if that's part of this package, but design standards for our signage. I know we have a couple of buildings that were put up in the last five or so years where we have stacked typography. So you go from a wide letter to a skinny letter to a wide letter, and that's really hard to read for a lot of folks. So keeping in mind accessibility needs, that is definitely one of them. But also excited to hear from you all about design standards around accessibility, and ensuring that we're not just meeting accessibility needs, but potentially even exceeding accessibility needs. Additionally, with like building new homes and making sure that we are encouraging and incentivizing our builders to have accessibility needs in mind for all new residential purposes. I've heard from some residents where they've asked builders to do something, and the builders won't do it because it's not profitable for them, but it's an accessibility need. And I want to make sure that whatever we're doing for design standards, we are thinking about that as part of the greater context. Thanks.
Any thoughts from a planning commissioner? Commissioner Varadvarashan.
Commissioner Parna, please. How does the meeting go along? For me, I think the design standards have to reflect a city which is not the same. So we've got different typologies coming in. I want to be able to see different external finishes that are allowed, because otherwise we're going to have, it's like Lego blocks, different colors. It's not what I visualize as an exciting city. So for me, it's allowing some leeway in what that looks like, and not being completely closed off to new forms and new ideas. But that being said, on the ground, at the street level, I am really looking forward to the standards at the street level, the pedestrian access. The city lives on the street. It's not the buildings. The buildings are the background, it's not the foreground. So treating it as such, that's where the interaction will be, and I'm hoping that that's what we can see, where we can bring in some vibrancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
I really appreciate the feedback. Thank you so much. I think, first of all, thank you all for being here tonight. It's fun to be with you again, because you're one of the commissions that we have met with most frequently, and it feels like a meeting of friends and a meeting of minds, and I'm looking forward to the conversation tonight. I really appreciate how Jeff introduced this topic, because I think that it is our job now to begin to implement the principles. We spent so long building together through Redmond 2050. When it comes to design standards, for me, one of the most important things in my mind is setting a standard that we can live with consistently, so that we can get on to the good work of producing housing and the affordable housing that we need here in the city of Redmond. I think that consistency is going to be really key. Again, we are looking for a design standard that the market can then respond to. And if the standard were to continue to change, that would delay the delivery of the thing that is actually at the heart of all of this, which is building the homes that we need for future residents. To that end, the other things that are important to me, I appreciate my colleague referencing universal design. I think that Redmond has led on that, and I'd like to see us continue to do that. But moreover, for me, the design standards can also be a function of not just place-making, but place-keeping. You all did incredible work to help designate the Intercultural District in Overlake. That should have a role in this conversation. The city of Redmond is on the grounds of the first people of Redmond. This is our place, this is their place for us to keep for them, too. So I think that, to the extent that the architecture and the design can help reinforce the culture of this place, that would be very helpful. But at the end of the day, I'm looking for a standard that can be identified relatively quickly, and then consistently implemented.
Commissioner Weston?
So piggybacking a little bit on what Commissioner Parna said, I really hope that Redmond, decades from now, is the sort of place where, if you land on a block, you know where you are. So that can be, I think that's a really nice thing about the building so far, is everything looks different. There's a lot of color, there's a lot of interest, there are a lot of cutouts. You get views to different parts of the city. It makes really good use of our topography. And I really, when we're specifically talking about design standards, that we've benefited from the Design Review Board that's leaving, I want to make sure that that attitude and that work is somehow encapsulated in a standard, so that people really feel empowered to build interesting buildings. It's really fun to see what's coming up next, and then to see like how it evolves over the course of construction. And then it becomes a marker for the street that you're on, especially when things are changing so fast. I want to keep that.
Commissioner Coleman?
I'm just going to double down, I think, a little bit on Jay Weston's comments. I was just recently in Edinburgh, and Edinburgh is a very old city, but you know where you are, to your point. It has a style. You know you're in that city when you're there. And the reason I bring that up is, a lot of that stuff's been built a long time ago, and I think we should, I'm not suggesting that the buildings in Redmond will stay for that long, but we should be having a forward vision of 100 years or 150 years for some of these buildings to be in place, and for people to actually experience that when they're in Redmond, they know where they are, and that it captures what the city currently is as well. And it's not just a new place, or as I might say, like Anywhere'sville, America. So I think the design standards need to be varied, and you need to have different lines of sight, and you need to feel like, what do people in 100 years want to say when they live here? So I think that, to me, is a forward-looking way of thinking about it.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Copley?
I just wanted to draw some attention to the fact that we've been looking at incentives that staff has been designing for the last several months. And I think they've done a really thorough job of incentivizing or building incentives for developers to build inclusively, affordably, and beautifully. And that's as a response to Councilperson Forsyth's concern about those things.
Commissioner Parna?
I also believe that this is an opportunity for like for the smaller housing pieces, like the ADUs and the cottages, that to Councilmember Stewart's point on trying to get this built quickly, there can be some ways of predetermining certain design standards, which will pass code inspections and have a library of those, or at least pointers to those, so that at least the small things can be built quickly. I know the big ones, you cannot have one size fits all, but for instance, if you look at container architecture, I'm a big fan of container architecture, there are pre-built designs, which are also talk about, you know, fire code and the works, right? So we should be looking at that to lower the barrier, to add the additional smaller housing pieces. So that's design standards from prefabricated perspective. Thank you.
Others? I will, I'll jump in to just say, I think, to plus one on many of the pieces of this conversation, and even just looking at this slide that was shared around updates coming in 2025 of the different aspects we're going to look at, from vegetated walls and roofs, and sustainable energy, and vegetated stormwater systems, as well as multicultural and innovative design treatments. It kind of is really speaking to what I'm hearing coming up. And also, I think, what would really create a built environment that's very Redmond, right? Is very environment-centric, very multicultural, and that gives that sense of place. So I'm feeling very inspired by what's on the work plan, aligning very much with what I hear from the community of what our community, what makes and feels our community. So I'm excited about that myself. Commissioner Woodyear?
I would say that, I would echo what everyone else has said, but the thing that really resonates with me is having a standard, having the flexibility, having the welcomingness that evokes a sense of pride. You know, I'm proud to live in Redmond, I'm proud to be a member, because regardless of what membership I have, whether I'm a resident, when I'm old, while I'm young, with different abilities, whoever I am, I feel like there is a place that I belong, and the design was meant to take me into consideration. I think that pride really is the wrapper around this.
So we'll put, any other comments? I'll just leave it open for a minute here, otherwise, maybe we'll move on, and if people have more thoughts, we can come back to these questions. But I will say, you know, I think this conversation and this work also stems out of this amazing project that I just want to recognize we all did through hard work together, really building on your many, many hours of work of Redmond 2050. And if I haven't said it yet, thank you for that amazing work, and thank you to the council for all the work and collaboration on that. It's really cool, but it's great to sit here and say, we've set the vision, and how are we going to implement it? And how are we going to design this city? Get down to the nitty-gritty. So with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Weston to tell us about the work plan for the upcoming year.
Right. So, hi, everyone, and thank you for having us. I'd also like to thank the planning commissioners for being here on a Tuesday. I know that takes some schedule work. So as you know, the Planning Commission, right now, is in a moment of transition, just in our scope of work. We sent the Redmond 2050 package to you late summer. Thank you for your work on that. We're very proud of the work that went into that effort. That was a lot coming together, and I think we really came up with something great together. The final step of that process this fall and winter has been the 2025 zoning code package, which we are wrapping up now, you will be getting it shortly. It's a significant reworking of Article I and Article II of the zoning code. This implements the policy decisions in Redmond 2050. So this is the detail work to actually make those policies actionable in the zoning code. We consolidated from 50 zones to 20 zones, huge simplification, major readability improvements. And I just want to add some editorial here. I just think the code changes are great. They're a great modernization, they're a great streamlining, and I think they do a beautiful job capturing all the hopes and vision of Redmond that was articulated during the Redmond 2050 process. So I know we don't like appreciate the zoning code often, but I just, I'm really, I'm proud of this work. So after Redmond 2050, and we get the zoning code package to you, the planning commission's work in 2025 is going to return to more of a typical pace, and that is going to be a mix of land use policies and regulations. And I just want to point out, it's regular, but most of us haven't seen it. So Commissioner Parna is the only one who is here for the original docket process that we'll be returning to. So this, again, transition period for us as we switch to this new type of work. So Q1, which we're in now, after the zoning code package and the new 2025 design standards that we just introduced here, which will continue into Q2, we also have a series of trainings that are going to get all of us up to speed on the work that we will be doing for the rest of the year. Q2, we elect new officers, so that's chair and vice chair, which is required by the municipal code. Q2, we're going to finish updates to design standards and start our first annual docket since 2021. Q3, we have an annual code cleanup package, so that happens every year. That's pieces that either were raised because they didn't work, it can be community feedback, it can be staff noticing that work is needed, but that's an annual process. We'll be doing that in Q3. And then Q3 and Q4, we're going to be working on functional plans. That is, you've probably actually seen more of them than we have, but just making sure that everything is following through on the work that we did in Redmond 2050. Just in terms of scale of work, there are some wild cards at the end of the year, because we don't know what the docket will bring. So the actual number of comprehensive plan amendments and code amendments are TBD. We will find out later. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Chair Weston. I don't have a question, per se, but I did want to make some comments on the annual docket process. I myself have not sat in this seat. The last one, I sat in those seats over there as a member of the audience. So I haven't been through the process with you either, but it is a helpful reminder that for many of us, it will be the first time going through the experience. As I think about what I hope you all will bring to us in any potential docket, because actually, we don't know if there will be amendments offered, but probably there will be, I just wanted to encourage us all to be really protective of Redmond 2050's intentions. We spent years together building a standard so that we could hold ourselves accountable to it, and this is one of those first chances to do that. So I believe that the ambitions of Redmond 2050 are worth pursuing, I think a lot of us do. And as you all consider the docket this year, I just hope that you'll be protective of Redmond 2050, because that's what I'm going to be thinking about when you all recommend a docket to us. So appreciate your time on that. And thank you so much for sharing a little bit more about what getting back to normal is. The commission has met so many more times, just in frequency per month over the last few years than in a typical period. So I hope you all enjoy a few more Wednesday nights.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Stewart. And I will just add this for the listening public, who may not be as deep in this as we are, that the annual docket is a docket of amendments to our comprehensive plan Redmond 2050. So we just passed a big update, but when we want to do little updates to it, the Planning Commission, they look at items that are submitted to amend that, and then they submit those to the council of what should be on the agenda to look at. And then they review each item and make recommendations on whether or not we should accept those amendments. So just for those who aren't as deep in it, that's, at least that's my understanding from having been on the Planning Commission when we were doing docket items. But that, I think, to Councilmember Stewart's point, we basically just decided on this plan, and now we'll look at, how do we want to tweak the plan? Or what proposals are there out there of ways to change the plan? So that'll be a really interesting and important work, and thanks in advance for doing that. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have any questions on the work program, but Council President Kritzler had mentioned we could go back to what we would like to see in the design standards, and I just want to make a comment here. One of the commissioners had mentioned pride in the city, whether you're young or old. And what occurred to me when I heard that was, one of the things, full disclosure, I meant Hawaii right now, so that's why I'm thinking about what I'm going to say. One of the things that I see everywhere is this sort of isolation through cell phones, social media. People don't know how to connect with one another like they did prior to the pandemic, and maybe prior to the dominance of social media. What I think I would like to see in the design standards is more of an opportunity for playfulness, whether you're young or old. I don't know what those amenities look like, you guys are the experts, but to increase that interaction and that sense of playfulness in our city, I think, would be amazing. So I just wanted to mention that real quick.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. Commissioner Van Neumann?
I was going to say something different, but what I just heard made me think of being in New York City, where there was a park with like stone permanent tables, where there were people playing chess, and probably poker. And then there was like a stone, again, gazebo, you know, pavilion-type place, where there were people, there was a meetup for dance lessons. And so those types of amenities bring people together in real IRL. But I wanted to go back to something else, which was the discussion about Redmond 2050. I was unable to be here. I thought better of coming for the celebration. When we were invited to come and have, I think there was cake and stuff, and the big, we wrapped it up and tied it up with a bow, and then here comes the storm, right? And so I didn't come out that night, and indeed, lost power. But I was so proud of Redmond and getting through that. I mean, it was, you know, not the biggest thing in the world compared to, say, the fires that are going on down in Southern California. But, you know, you got to be there for your residents, and the brand-new community center was there, and I was just blown away. Like, I actually showed up for a meeting here. I hadn't gotten the email because of communications issues with power being out, that we didn't have a meeting after all, because they said, there's power, we're going to have our meeting. Show up, no meeting. Like, oh, well, I'll just go over to the community center. And holy moly, there was so much commuting going on, it was amazing. And it just, it made me so happy to be in a city that has provided that service. And, you know, I think it really speaks to those values that we're promoting in Redmond 2050.
Very beautifully said. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I think that Commissioner Parna said it beautifully when she originally said, and I'll paraphrase, that the buildings are the background, and that the city is in the streets, whether that's, you know, literally, you know, in our parks, in our sidewalks, in our setbacks, in our community centers, you know, that the buildings truly are the background, and whatever we can do to have, to encourage the interaction, to where we can build the connections, we can build the relationships, to where then, we've got then a shared sense of pride, as Commissioner Woodyear was bringing out. So I love the direction that we're going, and also to Councilmember Stewart's point, is now to protect that.
Commissioner Parna?
I actually wanted to give a shout-out to staff on the heavy, heavy lift on Redmond 2050. They've been incredibly patient with us as commissioners, very stupid questions, most of them by me, but they've been patient, they've delved into questions that nobody thought to ask, and changed the course if needed. So, and some really brilliant ideas from staff, so just wanted to give a shout-out.
I would echo that sentiment. We have amazing staff, and so grateful for that work. We have amazing staff and so grateful for that work. Other comments or questions on either the work plan or any other questions that have been raised thus far? Well, it seems like you have a robust amount of work to do for your volunteer jobs for the city. So thank you again for your commitment to this. I guess before we close out, because I think that brings us to our last item, is that right? I'll just ask whether commissioners have any questions for the council or the council have any questions for the commission. We'll kind of open it up a bit before we close out the meeting. It's such a wonderful opportunity for us to be all together.
Do Commissioner question, what is the best way that we can support the work you guys are doing today?
Council Vice President Forsyth.
I would say you're already doing it.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks for the question, and I agree in large part with the council vice president. You all do, when I describe to folks how local government works, especially on these big planning topics, I say, well, the planning commission does all the work, then I read their matrix, and then we get these staff presentations, and then we fine tune things. So you guys really are doing, I'm not even going to call it first drafts, you're doing the many drafts on a lot of these topics before they get to us, just like the other commissioners do on their own topics. I think that another role of commissioners is to be champions of the city. So having been a former commissioner myself, you all have so much knowledge, and to the extent that you can share that with your neighbors who aren't yet engaged, or who are interested in, in getting more engaged, making sure folks are subscribed so they hear about the good work that you all have done. I think championing the city is another part of the collective work that we all have, and to the extent anyone wants to do more of that, come by my office hours, we'll geek out about it. Thanks.
And Councilmember Stewart brings up a great point, which the council has discussed a lot, is really a goal as we do community engagement events, to have more opportunities for commissioners to join us as we get out into the public and can share about the work, because you all do know so much about it. So much of your job is to gather that feedback from the public and then be able to weigh it and share back to us ideas on how that should affect our policymaking. So I think, for me, I would say, actually, one of the things that I find the most useful is reading through the discussion around the different perspectives you all bring and the perspectives you've gathered from community and what kinds of questions that's generated. And always appreciate when you share within your decision memos, any sorts of details on kind of the, the top things that have come about and the questions that, that you would make sure that the council is also grappling with before we make certain decisions. So I know a lot of 2050 work, we had discussions where our matrix item was, can you explain what the discussion was a little bit more on a particular topic amongst the commissioners? And it was great to hear about the depth that you all went into. So just want to continue to support you all having those great discussions, and then we can enjoy the fruits of that labor and hopefully all collaborate in reaching out to the public. Did you have a hand raised? No.
You touched on what I was going to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
You touched on what I was going to say about and making sure that we're showing up in community together as a team effort, because honestly, this, this is all such a collective work that we embark on here. So yeah, inviting you to be in Derby Days with us or other events that you can, we can all be together in community.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, I had a, I had a question, the council, which is, I'm curious about, it's great to have people, getting more people coming engaged in some of these conversations, but it's still a subset of a large population. So my question is around how communication and engagement happens for those that are less engaged. You know, I don't know about the rest of you, but I talk to people like, oh, what's happening with food? They're asking me, because they, you know, some of my friends know I'm a commissioner. I'm like, well, you should read some of these things, or do you not see that? So I'm curious about any thoughts on how you communicate with those, and I'm specifically talking about either less engaged people, but also new people, given the amount of growth we're trying to, we're trying to have in the city, and people don't understand what the city's doing. So just interested in thoughts around that.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much for the question. Always a work in progress and always a city that is evolving. There are a couple of very tactical things that are worth mentioning here. I mentioned before, subscribe, subscribe, subscribe. I, just the other day, was mentioning the town hall at my yoga studio, and they're like, why didn't we hear about that? Are you subscribed? I literally stood there in the yoga studio helping them subscribe to the newsletter. That is, in the absence of any other paper publication or newspaper, as sometimes folks yearn for, our electronic communications are the most direct way. So in community, and the city certainly is always working on this too, but getting people to subscribe, folks during the windstorm who didn't feel as well connected tended to be, when I was fielding those phone calls, tended to be the folks that weren't yet subscribed. So that is one of the most direct ways. But the city also does a lot of other things. So in Redmond 2050, which we've been celebrating and continuing to celebrate tonight, that's an example where the city of Redmond, we actually hired a local nonprofit with deep ties to multicultural communities within our city to actually do outreach in a way that was much more appropriate and to help folks get connected. And that work, we have really been able to celebrate, and we loved that too. When, again, in Redmond 2050, the staff did a pop up in Overlake at a bus stop, and I believe in a couple of, of course of a couple of hours, they talked to something like 27 people in Overlake on 152nd Avenue. I believe that those folks probably met a member of their government for the very first time, because if you live in Estera Park, you're probably new to Redmond, right? So it takes literally every tool in the toolkit, like we do with so many other things, but we all have a role in that, as well as the city having a more formal role, and maybe somebody else has more comments on that.
I'll just piggyback on this while others are thinking of, of their thoughts on this, is that I think a lot of the things that, that Councilmember Stewart raised that were just the many different amazing ways our staff in particular led all kinds of different outreach and our, our community partners led outreach through 2050, because we wanted to make sure that it was, that we were gathering feedback from all different parts of our community and all different residents, even if they usually don't engage. I think one thing I'd love to see going forward is that we take the learnings from that. We don't just do it, I mean, and we don't just do it for Redmond 2050. But there were some things we tried for the first time, or, and actually, when we were gathering with, with Eastside For All and some of the other nonprofits that helped to support the Redmond 2050 work, we were saying, how do we take this process and replicate it for so many other decisions we make and, and for so many other kinds of ways that we can get people engaged? I would also ask, kind of turn the question around and ask you all, what are your ideas? Where are we not reaching? Where could we do better? And, and what are some modes of communication that we could be investing in? I think our council has spent a lot of time discussing wanting to do more, and then actually in our budget, we invested more money into additional communications staff for the city, as well as additional, an additional addition of the focus newsletter, because we found that in doing surveys, it's actually still, the print newsletter is the way that people get the most information about the city of Redmond. And we were only doing it three times a year, so we decided to make it a four times a year because it's literally the way we deliver the most information. So, but I think we're, because we now added this new communications capacity, we're at a moment where we can innovate and would love to get your ideas as folks who are really plugged in. Commissioner Weston.
So this is one of my favorite topics too. One of the things that has come up earlier in Redmond 2050 for us that I want to highlight because of that is the idea of going kind of building by building to get information. So I don't know that so many of these new luxury buildings want a poster board near their elevators, that sort of thing, but they might have an email list that they might be amenable to sending out, like renter specific, or like some of our more dense neighborhoods, having neighborhood specific information about the city. I think that would be a great avenue, because you're really meeting people where they're at. It's very clear to me that the experience of living in a single family home and getting Redmond mail that way, something is lost in a lot of these taller buildings. And so just kind of focusing, how can you, like, what's unique about those buildings? Communication already, and can you leverage that would be a big one. And then the other thing is, I completely agree with the email list, but I want to say how important billboards in parks are at hitting me, like, kind of emphasizing, oh, right, there was something in email that I didn't get back to. I really appreciate all the signage in the parks. That is incredibly effective, and so many people see it.
That's wonderful feedback. Commissioner Aparna.
I wanted to kind of talk about types of community that can be reached in either a town hall setting or a special event. So let's talk, like, say, small businesses, meeting small business owners at the downtown park, for instance, right? I, I came to that event where all of you came and you had tables and we rotated. I loved that. I love that format. It's informal, people can move around, nobody's kind of stuck in one place. But having a team, especially related to small business owners, because there are concerns of displacement with all the growth that we try to put in, those are the kind of conversations we should be having. And allowing consumers to say, hey, you know what? These small businesses, they make something fancy here, which you didn't know about. So it's bringing the community in contact with the small business owners. I'm not talking about an exhibition, I'm talking about a conversation. So that's something that I feel would be of value, especially the displacement, the affordable commercial, which is kind of new to all of us, conversations around that, right? So, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Van Neumann.
I'm going to put my plug in for something I've thought about, which is, the schools all have reader boards, and why doesn't our city have a reader board? Because you could just put quick messages there that people can see as they're walking or driving by. And one of the examples that I've used in the past is, like, the open commission seats. You know, that could be advertised on a reader board, like Arts and Culture Commission looking for new applicants. City council meeting tonight, like the same way the schools do. The other thing I would say is that it is incumbent upon all of us to emulate a former commissioner, Roy Captain, who used to talk to every single person that he knew in the city and say, I'm a planning commissioner, what do you think about what's going on in Redmond? And I probably should do better myself, but I think that that's, like, we're all ambassadors of our city, and we should try and find ways, and I think it's probably more obvious for, for you guys, but like, everybody on the commissions should be talking to the people, not just that they know, but people that they meet. Or actually even, like, as Roy would do, walk up to people in the middle of the downtown park and say, so what do you think about the new park?
Thank you. And Commissioner Coleman.
I asked the original question, so I just want to make one other comment, which is, when you look a lot of other major cities, I think about media as, you know, reach times frequency is the classic kind of media communication thing. So how do you get the frequency of message out there with the widest reach? I do think when you look at other major cities, I said I was just an editor, but when you look in places like Amsterdam and other places, they have visual boards, which are video boards, you know, having something outside that, you know, the council offices here, or some discreet places in town. So people can actually see communication that way than, than just, you know, sort of standard boards, et cetera. And you can actually create more creative communication that way. So people are getting more educated, and if people know where it is, you know, they ultimately start looking for, for new content. So just, you know, it's still a bit more expensive, but it's one of those things, I think, to consider in the right way, so it fits in with the design standards we were just talking about. So.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing other, other comments yet, but I will say, to the point about the conversations in the park, we just had our council conversations, the second of that now quarterly series that we're going to be having as ways to be out engaging the public as a council. The first was that roundtable version in the park. The one that we just had this last week was our town hall format, and we're trying a bunch of different formats, because we realized people may feel comfortable in different venues. Some people just want to submit a question to a town hall, others might want to sit down one-on-one with their council member. So we're going to be brainstorming for the next one, and, and certainly great to hear some of these ideas, and would welcome any input as you think about that. Commissioner Woodyear.
I was going to say, as we think about the great outdoors and the downtown park, let's not forget the sports fields. I spent a lot of my time at Hartman Park, a lot of my time at Perrigo Park, I spent a lot of my time at the schools, all members of this community, perhaps members who are not necessarily thinking about the things that we'd like to engage them in.
Thank you for that, that great point. All right, well, seeing no other questions or comments, I think that brings us to the close of this agenda item, and we will take a five-minute recess before moving on to the next item. Thank you so much, Planning Commission. So great to see you and so great to have your work in our city. work in our city. Get back online, and council members who are online will be coming back in just a minute. We are back. This is the Redmond City Council Study Session on January 20, 2025. The next item on the agenda is the Transportation Master Plan Status Update. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
Thank you, President Kritzcher, and it's nice to be here this evening. Happy New Year. I haven't seen any of you since last year, so it's good to be back. This study session will provide an opportunity to follow up on the November 19 staff report that we did on the Transportation Master Plan with tonight's focus on curb space strategies. You'll recall that staff also included information on the bike chapter back in November, but we've concluded that that chapter needed a bit more work and a little bit more refinement. And so we'll be bringing that back in March, when we have our next study session scheduled with you. We will also have another TMP chapter ready for your review, so we'll start packaging these together and working through them. And we'll have the transit questionnaire that's currently out for community feedback, ready to share the results on that. And there were no specific questions on November 19 for us to respond to in response to the staff report. As you'll remember, November 19 was a busy night. We had lots of things going on, and the wind was howling at the time. And so tonight, staff will just do a brief presentation on the curb space chapter, and then we'll be happy to take your questions as part of the study session. Staff present tonight include Deputy Director Seraphy Allen, who is online, and Transportation Planning Manager Michael Hints, and Senior Transportation Planner Francesca Liberty. And now I'll hand it over to Michael.
Thank you very much, Director Helen, and thank you, council members, for your attention this evening. So you've been provided the draft Curb Space Management Chapter and your materials, and that's what we wanted to discuss today. Happy to answer any questions you have from your review of that chapter. And just want to reiterate that the Curb Space Management Chapter and the TMP will establish Redmond's overall strategy for prioritizing curb space in the public right-of-way, balancing parking needs with other community goals. With on-street parking included as a component of curb space, this chapter will set the stage for the Urban Center Parking Management Implementation Plans that we are currently undertaking, and that will support the city goals around TDM, economic development, and access. The draft that you reviewed, you may have noticed there was some placeholders for updated parking data. So we have that data now, and we're going to make sure that that information is updated in this chapter. So I did want to just maybe prime the pump a little bit and hit on a few of the key strategies in the chapter, and I'm sure you have questions on, based on your review, and we'll be happy to answer those questions. So overall, there's 12 strategies, and I want to call attention to just a few of them. Number one is strategies that include establishing curb space priorities by land use type and primary use. So you would have seen a matrix on page nine of the chapter that really sets the curb space priorities based on land use context. So that is an important piece of this chapter. Also, strategies around shared parking, a shared parking program. This is going to be a focus of the cities, of the city, regardless if we are successful on the Regional Mobility Grant, which you'll recall is, shared parking is a big component of that grant application that we submitted to Washdott. So definitely looking at opportunities to really optimize parking that's both in the public right-of-way, but also copious parking that exists in private hands. We also want to just kind of set community expectations around this sort of park once and walk concept, particularly in our urban centers. We are planning our urban centers to be very walkable and to really generate economic activity, and we want to encourage parking that, parking management that encourages that activity. So just in terms of what we're looking for from you tonight, we would really looking for kind of a thumbs up on the content in this chapter, or discussion on any major holes or policy hurdles that you identified in your review. And then we will, this will be the sort of last time that you look at this chapter until we come back to you with the full draft Transportation Master Plan. So with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for sharing all of that. I've got a question about the second strategy, about the park once, park once and walk. I'm a downtown resident, so I have the absolute luxury on the weekends of parking my car in my garage, and I get to walk all around downtown Redmond all weekend long, and I absolutely love it. However, understanding that the benefit of the park once and walk, the thing that is constant in our lives is change, but we don't like to be changed. And we're talking about changing a pattern of behavior for a lot of our residents. While we're holding on one hand park once and walk, we also want to see a higher turnover of our on-street parking. So we've got two situations, we want them both. How are we going to communicate and get the result of the behavior, the changed behavior that we're striving for?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. It would seem those strategies are a bit in opposition of one another. I think it will come down to just the management of that parking, and if it moves to metered parking, setting the right timeframes that allow people to do what they need to do on, if they're running errands downtown or having dinner with friends, but also maintain that turnover that you spoke to. I think another component is, and this is another strategy, is just making it easy for people to really find parking through wayfinding and other methods. So they don't have to spend a lot of time thinking about, oh, where should I park my car to get to where I want to get to? So it will definitely be a combination of strategies, and I think as the implementation plan goes into effect, and we implement some of these strategies, like more time-restricted parking or metered parking, fine-tuning will occur over time as we adjust and help people adjust to that new system.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add on to that is, in talking with some business owners in the last year since we implemented the two-hour parking restrictions, which we had hoped would add turnover so more people come to their businesses, one of the pieces of feedback that I heard from some of them is that, especially in our downtown area, is that when people used to be able to park for longer than two hours, they might go to dinner somewhere, then go to drink somewhere else, then walk around or shop at a business. And so the concern that two hours, it might not allow people to park once, then walk and stay for longer. So I think it is something for us to think about, is how do we manage both, as Councilmember Nueva Camina really put, of the turnover while also allowing for maybe parking in certain areas where people can stay for longer? Councilmember Stewart.
Well, thank you. I'll just kind of respond a little bit to the example that the council president gave. I think that that example was from a moment in time, and we're about to open a light rail station very, very, like, in the heart of our downtown, and I think it's just a new reality. And having this infrastructure alongside our curb management strategies, which are actually not all about parking exclusively, so I don't want to narrow the conversation. My hope is that as we adopt the Transportation Master Plan and monitor it, I hope that this example that we faced in the last year begins to solve itself, because we're bringing many solutions onboard for folks to enjoy the downtown for multiple hours on a Saturday night. A couple of questions. I had similar questions to, as Councilmember Nueva Camina, on the need, it's, in my mind, it's a triangle, the policy, the communication of the policy, and the behavior change that we are trying to implement, and that is the struggle here. One of the strategies suggested that we may benefit in the future from a parking benefit district. Is that a specific type of TBD, or is this an entirely different kind of district? And what are the ways that one of those might be funded?
That is something that is being explored, and I do want to just remind you that the TMP is just putting forth these strategies, and the Parking Implementation Plan that we're working on is really digging into the hows and the how it's going to happen, and kind of the best practices around some of these things, parking benefit district being one of those. Parking benefit district is typically created to funnel the revenue from the parking back into that program and to help fund other components of that program, whether it's maybe more technology and technology-driven parking solutions, or just other ways to improve the overall parking strategy. So it would be, I don't really know exactly how it's structured and pulled together, but it would be its own entity that's passed through an ordinance, I presume. And then its purpose would be to basically support the implementation of additional sort of parking strategies.
I appreciate that, thank you. And it gives the sense of a user-pay type model, if the residents who choose to park downtown are paying into a parking service, the fees that they would pay to do that would help to maintain that amenity, because that's what parking is. So I appreciate that. One other question that, and this may be not the right scope, given what you just said, Michael, but I'll take your judgment on it. I began to wonder, and I know we have the Planning Commission looking at EV chargers, and a particular question on that for us right now, but I'm struggling to get the sense of, what do we think is the right mix of publicly-owned chargers and privately-owned but publicly-available chargers? Do we have a sense, in a city of our size, or in a city that may one day be of the size of Redmond, what the ratio is that might be most useful?
I really can't speak to that this evening, but I will say that we are, we're working on that EV strategy. Jenny Liebeck is leading that work, and hope to have more answers.
Okay. Well, last thing then, I'll just say, if the definition of strategy is a set of coordinated actions, I think that the strategies that have been outlined in this work really well together, and I appreciate the work on it. Thanks.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I had a similar question on the EV, so thanks for asking that. Also, to be thinking about, if it is publicly-owned EV charger, does that charging price also include your parking price? So thinking about how those strategies might roll into each other, just making sure we're being mindful of that, because I have parked at some in Seattle, and it's a very interesting experience. This is a lot of information, and I will admit I did not get to spend as much time on it as I had wanted to, but I'm absolutely thrilled to see all the ADA efforts in here, making sure that we're adding more accessibility parking. I'm interested in, if you could talk a little more about how we plan on going about phasing out, it was strategy number, I think, if I can read my handwriting, it's either two or seven, phasing out the monthly parking and how we're going to go about this, and what the anticipated timeline is on that, because as we heard when we restricted the parking to two hours, many of us on council heard a lot from those community members, and so maybe what the timeline might be around that?
Yeah. I think the specific timeline will be defined in the Parking Management Implementation Plan. I guess I'll just say that we would want to phase that out in a measured way, so that we're not shocking holders of those passes. So there'll be plenty of warning when that happens, and we'll point people to, you know, the parking resources that are available.
Are we considering implementing a residential parking pass in its place, or no?
That I can't speak to.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Definitely interested on that topic, because I've lived in places that have had, you have to get your residential, so you know that that person is living in that area, and they're parking there, and they have that reason to park there. So something I'm interested in exploring, because I know it works really well in other places, so.
I should mention Caroline Chapman, who some of you know, is leading that Parking Implementation Plan work, and she'll be bringing that to you, so.
Great.
Definitely be an opportunity to really dig into the details around parking.
Moving away from parking.
I'm just going to pause here, because Deputy Director Allen has their hand up, so might have some thoughts on this.
Thank you, Council President. And I just wanted to jump in really quick, because it can be easy with all the different plans to get confused, and what I've shared with staff is, I think the comprehensive plan is setting our vision, the TMP is setting our strategies, and then the plan that Michael referenced, which will be our urban parking centers plans, is really the implementation recommendations of those strategies. So the how, and more into the nitty-gritty of, to the point that you were making, Vice President Forsyth, and so I just wanted to share that we're doing it in this phased approach, so that we're being very intentional. And so tonight is focused on more of the, do you agree with the strategy? And then Caroline will be actually coming in March to share with you an update and timeline for how we'll be doing the development of the Parking Implementation Plan, and we will have a whole engagement strategy with businesses and around that as well. I just wanted to share that as an update.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Thanks for that added information, that is helpful. Okay, so moving away from parking, I didn't necessarily see in the strategies, I saw maybe where I could infer ride-share curb management, and I know it's something I've brought up And I know it's something I've brought up in the past about making sure that we kind of have almost like geo-tagged areas for where Uber, Lyft can pick people up. This is something that came out of conversations I had with some of the gig economy workers and the union about if they know where they're supposed to be going to pick people up and people start to learn where to go to be picked up, that it actually is a really good curb management strategy. So I didn't necessarily see that in there, so please let me know if I missed.
Yeah, it may not be that specific in there, but yeah, that would fall under sort of the access bucket for curb space, providing that loading and unloading for whether it's rideshare or other services. And yeah, I think the Parking Implementation Plan and also work that Public Works is doing around in our urban centers to actually identify what space is going to be allocated to each use. That work is also coming. So that's going to get into the nitty gritty of exactly where those areas for that kind of service could happen.
Okay, so I'm getting too far into the weeds then, is what I'm hearing.
It's all very interesting stuff.
It is. It is good stuff because we are all giant nerds and I love it. All right, I will leave it there. Thank you so much.
Other questions from the council? Just go around for the first round. I see Councilmember Stewart has a hand up for the second. I'm not seeing any. I'm just checking the screen online just in case I missed any there. All right, we'll go to Councilmember Stewart then. Actually, I'll ask a question. Go ahead.
Not a question, I just wanted to provide a little commentary. Page 32 of our packet is where the table is that Michael referenced regarding the highest and best possible use of our curb space in Redmond and how that is ranked. I just wanted to share that Michael and Francesca actually gave a very similar presentation to the One Redmond Government Affairs Committee, which had business members of the community and developers and the like. And I heard large-scale agreement with the table as presented. And to the Vice President's point, that curb space is also about keeping our economy moving here in the city of Redmond. So just wanted to provide that insight from that conversation as well. Thanks.
Thank you. So one question actually on the leveling of this, and maybe it's just a specific thing that I called out, is there did seem a couple things that are more implementation level. For example, it's called out that we're going to remove the unlimited time parking near Anderson Park. And that seems like a very specific implementation type of action to have in here. I also have questions about, kind of related to that, on how do we think about parking near, especially community parks that don't have a dedicated parking lot? That one, for example, there's a private entity that allows people to park next to that park, but otherwise the street parking is kind of a key way for people to access who want to drive there. Hopefully lots of people walk there. And there are a growing number of downtown residents. But I guess I'm just generally interested, especially for some of those community parks that don't have parking lots, how do we think about the limits on parking near there? Maybe we think about it the same way? And then the second question on something like that is, you know, does that seem like that is, does fit in the TMP? Or is it something that might be more in like an implementation plan?
That's a good question. I think that Anderson Park was cited in here as an example of an area that's on the periphery of downtown. If we are implementing metered parking in downtown, there will be pressure put on those periphery areas for people to avoid the metered parking. And then we'll have to do something, some other kind of parking management in those areas, which would be time restricted. But your point about the park and that specific use is a good one and something we should take another look at in this specific context in Anderson Park and maybe other parks as well within urban centers.
Yeah, and it's something that I was thinking about, I know, as we were discussing the Southeast Redmond Park and that that park will also not be designed with a parking lot. It's supposed to be a community park. But there may be people from outside the community who want to come over there. So we'll just be, I'm just more interested in what our philosophy is on how we manage parking around some of those spaces. We don't have a dedicated public parking lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Comments from the council? I'm not seeing any hands raised. I do have one other question, so I'll loop back on that. So going to, I think one of the things that I really appreciate that, based on especially hearing some feedback from some of our parking changes this year, I've engaged in a lot of conversation on parking this year with folks, is establishing a parking system that's user-friendly and easy to navigate and enforcing clear and understandable parking restrictions in Redmond's urban centers. And I think really making sure that we're communicating clearly on this and that we set really fair rules. I think the place where I hear the most feedback on it has been when people don't understand what the rule is. For example, I think the one I've heard the most has been that people might park on the street in downtown and then they move their car to a different street parking spot and then get ticketed because you can only park in downtown in general for two hours, or at least that's their understanding. And that's, you know, something where the public doesn't understand what are the rules on that. And I don't know if you can actually clarify that rule because I get that question a lot. But I think, not to dive deep on that, but that more as an example of one where we implemented something new and then there was some confusion about what counts as a ticketable versus not ticketable offense.
Seraphie, did you want to speak to that one?
Yeah, I figured I'd jump in on that. So first, to answer your question about that will, we are really, I have also been in those meetings with you and wanting our businesses to feel that these strategies are supporting their work, especially as like the turnover and is user-friendly. So that I would say is like one of the number one changes that we'll be probably making recommendations. And that is partly why we recommend potentially having paid parking because people then have a timestamp and they know when it was and versus maybe that guesstimate around the two hours. And that has definitely been one of those top complaints that I've heard. Also looking if two hours is the correct amount and whether it should be three hours. And so we'll be looking into those strategies as part of the work that Caroline is doing. In answer to your more specific question of what the rules are right now, so right now you park, you can park on one street, the same name street for two hours. You can't park on that same name street later in the day. So if you like move your car along the same one, if you go to a different street on a different cross street, you can park there additionally for two hours. So it's not anywhere in downtown Redmond, but you have to be on a different name street. You can't park and move like three blocks down, down the same street. We will also look into that and whether that is maybe the best practice or not, but that is the current rule.
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying that rule. I didn't know that was the rule, so I think helpful to be able to share with the public too.
I'll put in the chat too. We have a website for understanding some of those rules that we can share out.
That's great. And I think to your point about either metered parking or other types of things, like, you know, in a lot of cities where they have the zoned parking, you know you're in a new zone or it tells you you can't add more parking time because you've already maxed it out here. I think that's a super helpful thing. So appreciate that. Thank you. And so I'll just kick it back out to councilmembers. Any other comments or questions? I did have one final question that I wanted to raise otherwise. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I'm wondering, since we've been discussing the possible strategy of having paid parking in our urban centers, how, there's part of me that thinks, especially the way the Deputy Director characterized it as having that timestamp, having the app that tells you you can't add any additional parking, that those tools not only help to fund the system to keep it working well for everyone as a high-functioning amenity, but also reduce our burden on enforcement by a human being in larger. So I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to that. To what extent does a strategy like that with a paid model influence how much enforcement burden this council would need to fund in the future?
Yeah, I think that would be a huge benefit of that kind of system. I mean, we all experienced that. When we were parking at metered parking, we track our own parking and we move generally. So I think there will be just better compliance overall, which will result in a need for less enforcement. We'll still need enforcement to make sure that it's all working well, but I think that's a great benefit of that kind of system.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Last thing I was just going to raise is around towing policy. I think I would be interested, as we get into the implementation plan, to just think about equity considerations in relation to towing policy and as part of enforcement. We have gotten several messages from residents who've noted when people's cars get towed, they have to pay upwards of $500, $600 for a single tow, which obviously people should not park where they are not supposed to. But it's not all just if you parked in a fire lane, they get towed for a lot of different reasons. And some people don't have the funds to be able to pay those types of steep fees that go to the towing companies. I just think that I would be interested in seeing, as we kind of think about also, I know there's a variety of equity considerations that as we get into the implementation plan, we think about specifically our approach to towing and any sorts of support we can offer to those who might be income limited. Is that something that you have talked about at all? I guess I'll ask.
Not in the TMP, but that's definitely a level of detail that would be addressed in the implementation plan.
Right. And I know that was a deep dive, but I did want to flag it as we think about the equity considerations.
Equity consideration, for sure.
I'll add just that this is a great precursor for the conversation that we'll have in March. And so put a plug in for you thinking about these kinds of more maybe meaty policy discussions that we'll want Caroline to address, that she'll come in in March for the development of that implementation. So we'll take the questions you had tonight and make sure she got those and begin that research early.
Can't wait. All right, I don't see any other questions. So I think we can close out this item and move on to the next item. And a couple items tonight, we have a similar team, so I'll pass it back. The next item on our agenda is Safer Streets Action Plan Status Update. And Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
Thank you again. So this study session will provide us with an opportunity to answer questions from our January staff report that was on the 7th on Safer Streets, the Safer Streets Action Plan, also the SSAP. So staff will provide further details on the several items in the issues matrix and answer any additional questions you may have. We did collect some questions on January 7th that we have responses for. And we'll also discuss next steps in terms of finalizing the Safer Streets Action Plan and bringing it to council for adoption. We are joined by the same group, Deputy Director Seraphie Allen, Transportation Planning Manager Michael Hints, and Senior Transportation Planner Francesca Liberty. And just to note that Chief Lowe will be following with a discussion of speed safety cameras, and we're hoping that those questions will be directed to him when our presentation is concluded. So I will hand that over to Francesca.
All right. Thanks, Director Helen. So as you all have been provided, the draft Safety Action Plan, Safer Streets Action Plan, is in your packet materials. And we look forward to answering any questions you may have on that draft. We also have some hard copies here of Redmond's High Injury Network and High Risk Network maps that we'd like to share and discuss with you. Those were not in your council packet, but we'll pass those out when we get to that point. The focus tonight is on the content of the Safer Streets Action Plan and ensuring you're okay with that content or bringing up any items that you'd like further detail on or any questions, any challenges with, we can discuss those tonight. So we're looking to get a thumbs up or having, bringing that discussion to us here tonight. And so then first, I'd like to delve into the questions that you brought to our January 7th staff report. We have four questions here that we'd like to highlight. The first is discussing more about the land use pillar in the safe system approach. That was a new pillar to the safe system approach that we're using for our action plan. And how could we have more information on this pillar? And so with that, the Safer Streets Action Plan is going to discuss how the safe system approach encourages the citing of development to minimize conflicts and encourage multimodal use and then support other safe system efforts. And then following, I'll kind of move through these a bit quickly. So we also got a question about our traffic signal manual updates and which of those would require additional budget. So generally, those signal strategies shouldn't require more budget as many of those are already being implemented or will be implemented. But some of those may require signal control cabinet upgrades, so that may require some additional budget if not already accounted for. And then finally, we had a question about if we could go into more detail about how lowering speed limits would be enforced, thinking about that speed limit-setting policy. And yeah, how, what would enforcement look like given some staffing challenges with our police department, especially looking at our local streets? So lowering speeds with our local streets and enforcement of that would be a low priority for enforcement. And our experience with learning about other cities and how these things are implemented has shown that just lowering the posted speed limit has a effect on drivers' behavior and a positive effect on safety on those street types. So in other cases, some design changes like such as traffic calming measures may be needed to get people to slow down and drive the appropriate speed. So that is something that we would evaluate on those street types. So then we also got a question about smart signs, which is the pilot program that King County has implemented. And to kind of give some more information about that, so smart signs are an emerging technology that the city may choose to look at in the future. It's something that the Safety Action Plan touches on. We'll be tracking the results of that pilot program in King and Pierce County before determining if it's a good strategy for Redmond to take part in. And we can give some more information, some more detail at that time. So I will pause here at the moment in case we have any additional questions for what we've talked about so far. We also want to reserve about 10 minutes to go into the High Injury Network and High Risk Network maps, but I'll take a quick pause here if we'd like to discuss anything further.
Thank you so much. Well, it was a pretty big plan, so we'll look forward to the questions. Councilmembers, what questions do you have? Check online as well. Council Vice President Forsyth, kick us off.
Not a question, but just really excited to actually see the pedestrian scrambles on the map. So pumped for those. Kind of want more of them than just the three that I think I saw. So just a plug for those for now.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. This is really exciting. And I want to give a special point of attention to the conversation in the plan around the no right turn on red signs and the variable signs related to that. I live in a neighborhood that has had one of those installed in the last year or so. And I was very excited when it arrived. And I've had the opportunity for a few months to see humans interact with it. And now I really appreciate the caution, which with your applying a tool like that. And one of my favorite things about this plan, I've long described it as a shopping list of you, if you will, of policy ideas and budget items we can purchase and tactics we can try. But the plan very discreetly acknowledges that every intersection needs something different. Every road needs something different. And I really appreciate that about this plan. You know, earlier tonight, one of our planning commissioners called on us to have less exhibition and more conversation and maybe consider having a theme for a future town hall. I actually think that this plan is a really good candidate for a community conversation. I think there are a lot of questions in community about what is the city possibly doing on X, Y, or Z? And that's not a criticism, and oftentimes it's just a gap in knowledge, right? I think a safety, a road safety-focused town hall would draw a lot of folks out and would give you all a chance to brag about the awesome work you've done on this plan and for us to share with the public now that we have this, these are the types of things we can begin to fund. And together, we can reinforce that shared collective goal around road safety and Vision Zero because I think it's a real priority in the city right now. So if that's something that the staff would be interested in partnering with the council on and as a city hosting that conversation, that's certainly something I'd be interested in seeing in the new year. I don't have any other questions on part- I don't have any other questions on particulars on that, but thank you so much.
I'll just give a quick response to that, that this plan also was brought to our pedestrian bicycle advisory committee. So for folks watching or listening, if people are interested, maybe looking for a venue other than a town hall, the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee, second Monday of the month, great venue for anyone interested in roadway safety or those multimodal issues, great chance to ask questions.
Thanks. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Yeah, I had in my notes here, and I'm going to tag on to the no turn on red conversation. I grew up in a state where you can't turn on a red arrow. And so when I moved here and I kept getting honked at, I actually eventually had to go and Google and see why I was getting honked at for not turning on a red arrow. So I think this might be a situation where as we are working on safer streets, that we might actually, you know, we've had success before where we've lobbied the state and said, this rule doesn't make sense anymore for current traffic systems and how people, we're building cities that are more pedestrian friendly. So I just, I think it might be time for us to either potentially throw our weight behind changing that at the state level, or, I mean, I love the implementation of the signs that we're putting in, but that cost burden then falls on us when maybe it should actually just be a broader system change. So just kind of throwing that one out there. And I did have a question about, there was a portion in here about signals for pedestrians, and I recently saw a version of a crosswalk button that had need more time for elderly folks. And that's something we hear a lot about from community members when they come and give public comments. So I'm hopeful that we can consider those in new installations of crosswalks for folks that maybe just need a little extra time.
That is really interesting. I don't know if I've seen that specific button. I will mention that Public Works team is working, or they're in the process of implementing adaptive signals in certain locations, which automatically gives additional time to people that are traveling more slowly in the crosswalk, which is a super exciting technology and really, really pleased to see that. But I have to look into that button. I haven't seen that.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? I'll jump in. So first of all, just want to say, this plan is amazing. I love it. I love also the way it's designed. The layout is so great and clear. It feels very readable for an average resident to read and understand what it is that we're trying to do. So just huge kudos to you. I love the photo examples with each of the different strategies. So you don't just say something, but you see it. It's just, it's so great. So just want to just overall say, I love this. And I love seeing so much of what we discussed, so well articulated in here, and just am excited to get to implementing all these strategies. One area that was called out that I hadn't kind of noticed in our past review of these topics was the idea of high visibility enforcement. And I'm curious if you can just speak to that strategy. What does that, what does that look like in practice? Is it, it's just having more kind of police in certain areas, or is there other things other than obviously that cameras? What does that look like?
So high visibility enforcement is a specific, specifically defined strategy in enforcement where, and this is something that you, King County Target Zero is kind of focused on this a bit, and it's usually around specific behaviors. Drunk driving is a great example. So you will see a campaign and messaging going out well in advance of any such effort that says, we're going to, we're going to be, you know, looking out for drunk drivers on such and such dates. And then police is out there and they're actually doing it. And so it's usually, it's focused on specific behaviors. It's for a short period of time, and it's really to help bring awareness to that and obviously change behavior, but bring awareness to that enforcement.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Council President. So I have mentioned, or I have said in the past that this is transformative. This is, what can I say? This is great work. What, and when I say transformative, it's, for me, this is a very necessary paradigm shift, critical mass, call it whatever you want. So it's not like, as I heard a second ago, a shopping list or a, this, the whole thing has to happen in order for it to be effective and to achieve the outcomes that we're looking for. And I think this is an amazing plan, but like every plan, there's always risks or things, barriers that get in the way. Public education, public rejection, you know, for me, I've mentioned it many times, one of the worst things that I'm seeing happening is this need for people to crash through lights after they turn red. That, I just feel that that is a potential behavior, I'm sorry, it is a behavior that if it continues to grow, is going to really create havoc for many people's lives. So the question I have is, in all of this, what risks or what focus areas do you see that we need collectively, meaning the council and the mayor's office and y'all and the public, to really achieve what we want this to be? What are those main risk areas that we have to stay certain and focused on?
I think, as you stated, Councilmember Fields, there will be some strategies, and I'll maybe just throw out reducing speed limits as a potential, where the public may not be completely on board with that, maybe in certain corridors. And at the same time, you know, we hear, you all hear, we hear, safety is of paramount concern to just about everybody. So really comes down to the messaging and how it's messaged and, you know, grounding it in people's everyday lived experiences. So, you know, the benefits are safer streets for you and your children to navigate. The downsides are potentially a few additional seconds in your travel time from point A to point B. So really grounding it in people's everyday lives. Obviously, you know, there are some strategies. We're going to talk about speed safety cameras, and that really is looked at as sort of an interim strategy to lower speeds, operating speeds until we can get around to redesigning the street that creates a self enforcing street. So there are certainly budgetary constraints in terms of implementing those design modifications that would do that. So those are two that come to mind. But I think generally, as was stated, safety is an issue that people are very concerned about. It's all over the news of just the wrong direction that the statistics are headed in, in terms of number of fatalities and serious injuries. Many people are impacted by that. So I think with some good communication, and we have a great communication team, we can successfully move forward on a lot of the strategies in this plan.
Thank you. I appreciate those too. And I'm assuming that we will see the price tag at some point in your work sometime during, you know, 2025, so that we have a better idea of the resources. And I know that it's expansive, and I know that it's a change in public perception of what a life of quality is. Like you said, is it getting there seven seconds faster, or is it making sure that you don't ruin your life and somebody else's life by unnecessary carelessness? But I appreciate what you said. I do think that we need to maintain those outcomes in our mind in order to understand those risks. So outcomes, meaning not just safer streets, but actually a perception of safe streets. And what that does is invites people to actually change their behavior, because now they trust that the infrastructure and the law enforcement is on their side, and they will ride bikes, and they will walk, and they will, you know, alter how they live. And the benefits are tremendous, as we talked about sustainability, climate change, health benefits, social benefits. So I'm excited about this. I'm just putting in my view that it takes, it's not, the plan doesn't get us there. The commitment to the plan, meaning the resources, and the continuous commitment to educating ourselves and the public and listening to the public. I also don't think we should just let them know how great we are. We need to have them be part of that greatness. And that means their ideas need to be heard and integrated into this plan. So I preached long enough. I appreciate you, and I look forward to a different Redmond. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, two thoughts. Michael, I appreciate that you brought up driving under the influence. We had a visit from our local judges last week, and while it was not the intent or the main point of their conversation, I was alarmed to hear them so casually reference that when they get a call for a search warrant in the middle of the night, it's usually because of needing a blood alcohol test or other DUI tests. So it is something that is in the culture of Redmond. We have a ton of economic activity. We are hoping to drive to downtown Redmond, including our restaurants and businesses as World Cup comes along. We're also going to have a light rail running, and I see a potential, really great opportunity to be marketing and encouraging our community to use our awesome public transportation rather than hopping on the road and helping to develop some new, some better behaviors, even just through that one opportunity, through that one event. I want to circle back here to the study in front of us. Just to be very clear for the listening public, we have the funding already to do the citywide speed study, and that is going to be taking place. That's funded by the federal government. Is that correct?
Yes, through WashDot. It's a federal highway safety improvement.
So that work will already be occurring this year. And then, so just for the listening public, yes, the potential for changing the speed limits could happen. That could be a conversation we come back to, but we're going to study the issue first, and we've already secured the funding for that. For my colleagues, you may be interested, if you haven't been following along, MRSC has been doing this really lovely blog series on Bellevue's work to lower speed limits across their entire city. And they have detailed the amount of internal engagement within the city and coordination that that requires, but also tracking really well the community engagement that it takes to make something like that successful. That implementation period is more than a year long. So it's, we have a neighbor we can continue to learn from, and fellow members of ETP and all the other things that we can continue to learn from as we consider that strategy. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the council on this? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Just a quick question. I'm just geeking out over these maps. What does an angled crash mean?
So that's, and we're getting into the weeds here.
I know.
That would be if a car or two vehicles collide as one is making a turn of some sort. So it could be a car going straight through an intersection and another one turning, making a left turn and doesn't yield the proper right of way.
Got it.
That would be an angled crash.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I know you did want to talk about some of the maps.
That's a good segue into the maps I have here.
Yeah, so go ahead, yeah.
Okay. We'll maybe pass these around, and I can explain as they're getting passed around. These are two maps that you'll see. One is our High Injury Network is the first page of the packet that will get passed around. And the second one is the High Risk Network. So these are two different maps. The High Injury Network, well, let me back up, both of these maps are a required element of our Safer Streets Action Plan, based on USDOT's requirements. So the High Injury Network, that first page, is based on historic crashes, historic data, with fatal and severe injury crashes more heavily weighted. So that shows, based on the data that we've assessed over the last five-year period, where these high injury crashes are occurring in Redmond. Then if you'll go to the second page, the High Risk Network is taking a proactive look at Redmond's transportation network and looking at where safety risks could occur. So this is showing historic crashes, but also looking at safety risk factors that were derived from the local road safety plan that we developed. So those risk factors are taking, kind of coming together with the data to show proactively where we have a higher risk for crashes. So both of these maps will be included in the plan, and we're looking at overlaying them into one figure to kind of show how they interact with each other. So having both of these maps in the plan will have, give Redmond a better opportunity to apply for grant funding once the plan's complete.
Councilmember Anderson?
And to clarify, this is crashes related to all types of vehicles, pedestrians and bicycles included on all of these.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nova Kamina?
Thank you. For the High Risk Network, was any consideration given to incoming light rail within the year, and how that is going to impact, I wouldn't say increase or decrease, but a shift in risk?
So tangentially, yes. Two of those risk factors that went into this map are looking at bikes and pedestrians. So the presence of pedestrians in marked crosswalks or bicycle activity in our bike lanes were both incorporated into developing that kind of risk assessment for this map. So the higher kind of multimodal activity areas, such as the light rail stations, would factor in.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. A follow-up question on that. And have we, do we have numbers yet for what the anticipated increase of pedestrians with the light rail?
I don't think we can, we have specific numbers. No, that's a, that's a hard number to quantify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if there was some genius somewhere where we've had, you know, kind of a gauge of what to expect.
Yeah.
That we could be figuring these things into, into our planning over the next year.
Yeah. I'll say we definitely collect pedestrian activity data with our turning movement counts at intersections that are collected every two years. So that would be something we could look at once we collect that data after the light rail has been implemented and kind of given a chance for folks' travel patterns to change. That's something we could look at in the future to compare those volumes at certain intersections, kind of before the light rail and after the light rail.
We do have projected ridership numbers for light rail, and we can interpolate, you know, what level of activity that would generate at the station level. Of course, those are spread out through, throughout the day, so it's a little hard to know for sure.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I know the listening public can't see these maps, so I just wanted to state that some of the differences between them, the high injury and the high risk, you might think that past incidents are the main leading indicator for the high risk, but it's not the case. Just by way of an example, on the High Injury Network, we do not have most of 148th Avenue Northeast colored in. But that is a corridor that a lot of us have a lot of fear on when it comes to road safety. And when we look at the High Risk Network, we are planning for 148th Avenue Northeast to be a very high risk network. So thank you so much for your work on this, because, just because something did not happen yet in the past, we want to plan for the, for the future. So thank you for bringing these forward, and I'm really glad we're going to have them in the plan.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for mentioning 148th, because in looking at all these plans, I'm like, I have a lot of concerns on 148th myself. The pandemic was great for bike riding on 148th, because no one was out, and Bellevue had just repaved it, so it was fantastic. But I would never have otherwise ridden a bike on 148th, not even currently. So I appreciate seeing all that. Just wanted to add into the question about light rail and ridership. Just wanted to add into the question about light rail and ridership. I can share that I just heard the stats from current ridership. Even with the two downtown stations not being open and not being across the bridge, their daily ridership has exceeded their expectations, and they're looking at around 6,000 in their daily ridership. So I don't know how you can extrapolate that out once we open across the bridge, but we should expect a lot of pedestrian foot traffic in those areas.
Thank you. Other questions?
I guess I'll ask a question following up on the differences between the High Risk Network and the High Injury Network. In particular, I noticed through the downtown core, you know, if you look at the High Injury Network, there's all kinds of lines down there, and then there's a through line when we look at the High Risk Network. Is that because we're trying to really focus in on what are those spines that we'll want to really make sure to protect and be able to have people get through our city on? Because I feel like also when I look at this High Risk Network, it aligns a little bit to some of the different spines we're trying to create for bikes and pedestrians.
It does do that. I will just say that the High Risk Network is really data-driven, so we didn't just draw lines on a map. So I think the reason why you're not seeing a lot of High Risk Network in downtown is because the roadways tend to be slower. They tend not to have -- so some of the risk factors that were looked at was roadways with 30 mile per hour or higher speed limits, roadways with medians divided roadways. 148th is a great example. That tends to encourage faster driving, and it's obviously longer pedestrian crossings as well. What are some of the other ones? Oh, yeah.
Improper speeding is another one.
Improper speeding.
Yeah, so roadways that we've already seen, based on, you know, speed data, where there's already high speeds over what's posted, speed limits. And then, as I mentioned earlier, presence of pedestrians in marked crosswalks, so that high pedestrian activity is a risk factor, and as well as bikes in both bike lanes and at cross -- signalized intersection crossings. So that high multimodal activity was a risk factor as well. So yeah, as Michael mentioned, both of these maps, very data-driven. One looking at, kind of thinking about the past, the historic data, and one looking towards the future.
Wonderful. Thanks for that explanation. All right, I'm not seeing any other questions, so unless anyone has anything -- all right, I'm not seeing anyone raising a hand. We're going to close out this item and move on to the next one. Thank you so much for these presentations, this great work. I think we'll be changing over in terms of the staff here, so I'll give it a minute before we get to our next item, but is there any final words that you wanted to share before we move on?
Did you mention next steps?
Yeah, that was --
Okay.
That was -- my final words are next steps for this item. So we'll incorporate this feedback into our safety action plan. We also have some other refinements that we're working on, and we'll have -- we'll release a public draft for review by the community for comment in the latter half of February. And then, coming back, you'll see us again for this on April 1st at 2PW with the final plan. At that point, we'll request to add it to the April 15th consent agenda for adoption, and then we'll be back at that business meeting for adoption of the plan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is automated speed safety cameras, and we have some wonderful folks from our police department, namely our police chief, Daryl Lowe, here to introduce this item.
Good evening, yeah, there. Good evening, Council President. We're here for another touch on the Automated Traffic Safety Program. If you recall that on, excuse me, on October 17th, that our committee of the whole was our last touch and conversation with it, Deputy Chief Coats responded to the questions that we received from council. So this is another opportunity, if there are any additional questions that council has or anything we can clarify about the program. If not, our next steps, we would plan to bring the amended city ordinance with the Equity Analysis Report and the vendor contract to the Public Safety Cal Meeting on March 18th, with an asset, it'd be put on the consent agenda for April 1st. The RMC would be amended to incorporate the legislative changes from the RCW specific to automated traffic cameras, and then this ordinance was also updated to include the placement of automated park cameras, should those be incorporated into the program at a future date. I know there's some additional conversation to be had specific to the parks, but if, since we amended the ordinance, we want to just take, you know, one change to it and get it done. The Equity Analysis Report is being produced by PD staff and planning, and this is a requirement of the RCW that that equity analysis be done in the impacted areas for the camera placement. And then again, that is a requirement of the RCW. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions specific to that or as a follow-up to the previous presentation that you guys just had.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. So if I heard you correctly, this -- the ask that you're having for us in the coming weeks is just for the school zone with the potential to add parks later?
Yes.
Okay. And as we've talked about many times, it'll be enforced when lights are flashing?
Correct. So yes, to, I'll say, clarify for the public, yes, it is only enforced when the beacons are flashing. That is done in conjunction with the school schedule. If for some event, or for some chance, there's like a snow event or something that causes school not to be in session when it normally would, that is taken into account before the tickets are issued. So if, say, we have a snow or ice event, schools get canceled, the beacons are, excuse me, automated, so they would be flashing if a person were to go through at that time in excess of the speed. That would be known on the, I'll say, on the back end before a ticket would get issued. So in essence, the ticket would not be issued if the school was not in session. So again, with, you know, all of the technology and different things that the police department's brought forward, there will be appropriate signage. The RCW requires signage to be up 30 days before anything ever happens. So again, I don't intend to play peek-a-boo. We're trying to ensure that, you know, the kids are safe in those designated zones just before and after, you know, the areas that our schools are in.
Thank you. That's really good clarification, and I wholeheartedly agree about speed enforcement in the school zones, protecting our kids. That's paramount to me, but the conversation around adding future parks and future areas throughout our city is definitely an area that I would want to have more conversation about, but for this school zone-specific section, I'm good.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, chief. We just had a conversation with the planning team, and we specifically ended on a note about these maps for our High Injury Network and our High Risk Network. We don't have maps of the schools provided in this packet. I'll admit, I'm having a little trouble keeping up with the conversation in front of us. It looks like there's a couple pieces of information for the conversation that aren't quite here. To the best of your knowledge, do you know if the cameras being considered for these school zones fall in these high-risk networks?
Having not, excuse me, having not seen those maps, I do not, but I would not believe that they would be in those areas from the conversation. It sounds like many of those areas are in the more high pedestrian and/or high, I'll say, vehicle density areas.
I'm going to take it out. You don't know, because you haven't had a chance to review them, which is fair. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just follow up on that, before you bring back this item for the council to make a change, especially in terms of ordinance, that I think it would be helpful to have a map of exactly where those cameras are going to be, as well as I think we've requested in the past to have basically written down what you're telling us of what will be the different aspects of implementation of these cameras, because some of -- hopefully most of it will all be captured in the ordinance, but anything that goes beyond, as well as just within the actual memo, a description of that, as well as a list of all the places in addition to the maps, I think would be really helpful. Council Vice President Forsyth, are you going to say a similar thing? Okay, great. Other questions from the council, comments?
Well, yeah, I will just weigh in to say, I think, similar to my colleague, I think starting with the school zones is a great plan, and look forward to getting the details on what that looks like. Before we approve this, I would like to know specifically what are we approving? I think we have the idea of what it is, putting cameras in school zones to help to make them safer for our kids, and then also hopefully taking those learnings to figure out where else we might implement this technology. But having the specifics about what we're agreeing to would be very helpful in order to, for us to advance this.
Okay. So we'll call out specifically in the revised ordinance, the speed surveys identified the schools that the cameras would be placed at, but we'll make sure to further highlight that. And then, as far as the implementation of the program, the rules of the program are specified by the RCW. So as far as pointing the public to the direction as to what the program will be, the program is specified by law, so we can't modify or change it. So the RCW 4663220 specifies what a speed camera enforcement program is, what we will be in your packet essentially will be, that RCW, and then we have to amend our city code, our municipal code, to reflect the changes in the RCW. So it will all be based on that RCW. The amendment to the code is based on the update to the RCW. So we will highlight that for you guys, and then as far as for the public, again, we will make a reference or from both either the city's website or from the police department's website, they can, we can hyperlink it, so they can go directly to it, they can see what the provisions of the program are.
Great, thank you. I will ask one follow-up on that. So specific to the RCW versus what individual cities have, for example, the, what we were just discussing around whether or not the cameras would be able to track speeds and issue tickets outside of school hours, that seems like something that, from my reading and what we've discussed, was an option potentially, or is it that all of the, per the law, we would have to only take it during the flashing light time?
So that would be the provisions of our program, so we're not looking at this as a speed enforcement program. It is specific to school zones, so it would be consistent with school hours. I will say, I know there is a bill working in Olympia right now related to both speed and noise enforcement, but that is specific to municipalities that have a problem with street takeovers and racing. So this is not that, this is specific, again, to schools and school times.
So to that point, if we have something that's specific to our city and not the RCW, it would be helpful to know for that in terms of the implementation plan, of what are we specifically going to do in our city? How will it function versus generally?
Okay.
Deputy Chief Coats?
I'm quite confident the Equity Analyst Report that we were creating is going to fill in all the blanks that are left out from the RCW and the Redmond Municipal Code, because it will be specific to Redmond and when the beacons will activate. So I think you'll enjoy that document, it'll be very thorough, and again, it's intended to fill in all the gaps omitted by the RCW and the municipal code. Have that for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Chief, I know that we've, in chambers, we've talked a lot about different types of cameras, and so anybody who's listening along and knowing that as a city where we're considering leveraging different technologies, to be clear, can you just state for anybody who's listening, the differences between the different cameras that we're talking about? Because this seems to be different than, say, our discussion around flock cameras.
So the technology that has previously been approved and that is in the permitting process right now are for automated license plate reading cameras. Those are fixed cameras that will capture data points, i.e. license plates of vehicles that pass by a fixed location. That is separate from this. This is cameras specific in school zones, which are designated areas just before or after schools to decrease the speed and increase the safety for the kids during those specified school times. The intent of the program is only to run it, again, during school hours, not 24/7, not weekends, holidays, et cetera. And again, that is specific to, you know, I'll say, youth and pedestrian safety around schools. There has been some conversation, sidebar if you will, about the potential of speed enforcement cameras. That is a separate camera system for individuals that may have traveled overseas, they're commonly used over there. Unfortunately, I'll say, my idea was shattered, because it's not going to be possible due to Washington State law. Like I said, there is a law right now in Olympia that is working its way through the process, but that is specific to speeding, and then if you have, I'll say, that type of enforcement problem, then it may be possible, if that piece of legislation is successful, to utilize those types of cameras for that specific thing. Fortunately, we don't have that problem here in Redmond, so it's kind of a non-starting conversation for us right now unless something changes in Olympia.
Follow-up question to that, chief, is around systems talking to each other or data sharing. They are separate, however, do, is there ever a time where the data is crossing? And if not, then at what point is there visibility to where we might see patterns?
So they are two separate and distinct systems that do not talk to one another. The data that is collected remains the data of the city of Redmond. There is, we talked about person identifiable information, it is the license plate tag that gets called out. It's not shared across agencies unless it's pertinent to criminal investigation, and I'm speaking of the license plate reading cameras. In this particular case, this here is specifically for speed enforcement cameras, and that is if the person exceeds the maximum speed limit. So otherwise, information is not captured within that school zone. So for example, at the school zone, the speed limit is 20 miles an hour. If the vehicle comes through at, you know, 20 miles an hour, 22 miles an hour, nothing is captured, there's no, you know, information or data point. If at six miles over the posted speed limit, that would be the violation point. At that point, yes, that license plate is captured, that citation is then verified by an officer, and then subsequently, a ticket would be issued. So that information would not cross-reference or just automatically exchanged with the automated license plate reader. If by some chance, a wanted vehicle passed by and happened to trigger it, then yes, the officer may go, oh, I saw a bulletin about the, you know, the red car, it matches, so it would be a human connection, not a automated connection.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
One more quick follow-up question. You mentioned the six mile an hour over the speed limit and the 20 mile an hour mark. Is that within the code, or is that something that we have flexibility on?
So that would be part of the recommendation from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration as far as the appropriate trigger point, if you will. The higher the speed over posted, the greater injury and the greater likelihood of death, especially when we're talking about a child.
Yeah, exactly why I was thinking, that the difference between 20 miles and 26 miles an hour for a child could be life or death. So interested to see how many instances So interested to see how many instances of people speeding within the school zone we get at that, at that rate, and if we may consider moving away from the recommendation and setting our own potentially.
Shockingly, it's much, much higher than, than six. Some of the speeds captured in the speed survey were, were quite alarming.
Yeah. I'd, I'd be in favor of four. So, thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I have four questions, but the first three are pretty quick, as I apologize for getting a little lost here at the beginning. Deputy Chief, can you remind us when the equity analysis is going to be before us?
It'll be a pretty heavily detailed committee meeting. It'll be the same day as the ordinance, the amendment ordinance is presented to you, as well as the contract with the vendor. So kind of three for one on that March committee meeting.
March 18th is the target date.
And councils, the, the ordinance is coming to committee at the same time, or the ordinance is expected, is presented for a vote on the day that we also see the equity analysis?
The amendment would be presented for a vote to approve.
Thank you. And who's in charge of the installation and maintenance of the cameras? Do you work, is it, is it your department? Is it another department in the city?
So it's a vendor that will work with Public Works on our normal permitting process.
Okay. And how's the coordination going? I, my sense is that now that there's three departments essentially working on the recommendation and implementation of these first ones.
So I'm sorry, what's the question?
How is the coordination going? And is everybody getting what they need out of the recommendation you have before us today?
Yes. So the coordination is, is working fine. We're working with planning on this and a number of other transportation-related issues. As you know, the parking enforcement is in the process of changing. So that, yes, there is tons of collaboration cross-departmental, and yes, we have everything we need.
Okay, thank you. And last question. Deputy Chief Coats, I didn't see this in the response that we received via email, but I'm wondering what the monitoring interval is going to be for reporting back to us on the efficacy of the cameras? Is this something that we would expect to see in quarterly crime statistics and hopefully over time, see the number of tickets go down? Or how do we expect to evaluate whether or not the cameras are working?
So like most of the projects and programs brought forward, yes, we can include it quarterly. I would say at, at a minimum twice a year, but if quarterly is fine. The particular vendor that we've selected has very robust analytical capabilities, so we'll have the ability, you know, to, I'll say, deep dive or drill down, you know, into details. We can get you maps if you want to geek out on some more maps. So we will definitely be able to provide, you know, sufficient feedback to council at, at an interval that, you know, you guys, you know, want to see it.
Okay, thanks. I, I think at least twice a year is great. However, it works best. My intent is never to give council more details than it needs, but it is our job to evaluate, are we actually making the road safer? And are we using taxpayer dollars wisely? Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Council Vice President Forsyth?
I sense some trepidation from my fellow councilmember on the timing of the information. So I'd just like to open up that conversation for us to actually discuss it.
Yeah, thank you. I was actually thinking that, I would suggest, I believe this will come through the Public Safety Committee, is that right? So I would ask that our Public Safety Chair look at the other items that are on the agenda that day. And if it's a robust agenda, I would just set the expectation with, with our chiefs here that I think we'll probably need to make sure there's enough time and plan that it may not be the only conversation in committee that, that we'll need. It's hard to know without actually looking at the equity analysis or the specifics of what's being proposed. From my perspective, of how much time we would need to be able to review this, this is a really helpful conversation. But I do think it's, it's good to set the expectation since at least two councilmembers have flagged that there may be many more questions that come up when we actually look at the specifics. I see a thumb up there. So, and I see a nod over here from our chief. So just want to make sure, you know, we always love to ask you lots of questions, especially on this topic. I do want to end this item by just saying thank you for the work on this. This is, as Councilmember Stewart referenced, a multi-departmental effort that is being led on implementation by our police in terms of being able to create a new strategy that's within our Safer Streets For All action plan to help to make our streets safer. So appreciate you leading on this. And we'll look forward to seeing the details come back soon. With that, I think we'll close out this item. So the next item on our agenda and last item is council talk time. At this council talk time, we do have one hopper item that was submitted by Councilmember Anderson. So I'll just open up the council talk time specifically with looking at that, or council policy proposal, as we call it now. And we'll turn over the floor to Councilmember Anderson to briefly describe the proposal.
Thank you so much. This evening, we are seeing the second draft of a combination of what was provided to council previously over email and also submitted for the last study session this month, just to keep you advised of what that is. It is a few changes to, proposed to the Redmond Personnel Manual. And the reason I have proposed these items is because I believe these protections that are offered in our manual could be expanded to protect our employees further, given our current political climate. And just to read this into the record for folks listening at home, the following proposal includes updates to the Redmond Personnel Manual. The city of Redmond recognizes multiple types of discrimination against protected class populations in the Redmond Personnel Manual for purposes of hiring, firing, and management of general staff. The current statement does not include emerging areas in identity, including neurodiversity, survivors of assault, stalking, abuse, or violence, immigration status, and socioeconomic status. These populations of individuals, whether reported or not, are more vulnerable to harassment and discrimination, as well as intersectional issues of, of other forms of discrimination and harassment. And the city is required to follow certain laws, including the State Fair Chance Act, but the benefit of this act for job applicants is not currently noted in our Personnel Manual. Explicitly in the Fair Chance Act is also called Band the Box for folks at home. The city of Redmond also does not currently provide bereavement leave or parental leave for pregnant persons and their immediate family members who experience a pregnancy loss or abortion. And the city can, and I believe we should, adopt more expansive protections than what is minimally required by state and federal law. And so what is in front of the council tonight, and what I ask is for a conversation and discussion on next steps on how to understand this, is to, a few additions in text to Sections 2.10, nondiscrimination equal employment opportunity, Section 2.20 harassment, Section 3.40 hiring procedures, which deals with the Band the Box item, and 9.60 bereavement leave for non-union employees. The only comment I would add to this is that it's a consideration for, we need to notify the unions 30 days in advance of any changes to the Personnel Manual. However, as far as I am proposing this evening, these are items that can be changed for non-union workers, and there's the, the negotiation process in our collective bargaining process that covers the unions and their consideration efforts. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this. Provided significant supplemental information and references to legal requirements in this, in the state, and be happy to answer any questions about it. I'd love your support, and I would also love just to hear feedback about this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. As a reminder, we're not going to go very deep into the council policy proposals at this stage, but I will ask if councilmembers have clarifying questions or comments related to whether or not you'd want to move forward to a deeper conversation on this item. Give it a moment. Councilmember Nuova Kamina?
Thank you. Clarifying question as far as how deep of a conversation that we want to go into.
I guess, if you have a clarifying question, go ahead. I think we have the time at the, at the moment, so.
Like, when, with one of them on, on bereavement leave to cover for pregnancy loss or abortion, I believe right now the, the policy, and I, as council, I don't think that we should be completely in, in the weeds of it, however, definitely looking over things. And wondering if that is, would be covered under medical, like where, where else is that currently being covered right now?
Thank you. That sounds like that, that actually may be a question for our HR team or mayor, but Councilmember Anderson, I see you're muted here.
It'd be most likely covered under a sick leave and not bereavement.
And I'll ask whether Mayor Bernie or, or the staff have any other comments. We, I know we have our HR director here as well.
We have a HR director here too. Excuse me, my voice is very strange tonight. We have a few, we, we did talk to briefly to our attorney about this, and I will have to ask Director Laird about that particular question, but I can answer some of the other ones that are already covered under other provisions already in our Personnel Manual. Do you want to answer that one in particular?
Sure. Hello, Catherine Laird. So the employees would, would be covered under, likely under FMLA, which is a federal law, of course, and the PFML, which is state law, and then WALAD, which is the Pregnancy Law Protection for Women Based on Pregnancy Health Conditions. So it would either be, they would use paid leave if they have leave available or an unpaid status, but it would be in a protected status if they took that leave.
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. I, thank you for that answer. I was, I was assuming that FMLA would cover the bereavement for that portion, so thanks for the clarity there. I, there's a, there's a lot in this, which I think would require a lot of legal review. And given my limited knowledge on protected status, I, I'm not sure, given the current state of things nationally, that I'm comfortable delving into working outside of the bounds that we're already working so hard to protect. I, I very much appreciate what this is trying to achieve and adding more protections for, for our staff. But I, I think this would require a lot of legal review, and I just, I, I want to make sure we're prioritizing ourselves and our scope of work this year appropriately. So if there, I know the mayor mentioned that there was some conversation about it, so if there's any time that we know how much we would be spending on diving into basically creating our own protected status outside of the federal bounds.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie, can you speak to that as well as just what the process would actually be? Or the process typically is for updating our HR policies and making any changes like this?
Well, I think Director Laird can answer that part of the question, but I can say anything beyond where the scope is now would take considerable legal review. And that would, if that was a council priority, it's, it's not our priority. We go through, I'll, I'll let Director Laird speak. I don't want to speak for her. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Yes, so when we look to update the Personnel Manual, what we do is we identify what the language is going to be, and we determine what language needs to be reviewed by legal. And then we do bring it to the director's team, have them look at it, make sure that they're comfortable with it. And then we have managers and supervisors review it. So we have a lot of review that goes through the process. And then once we're done with the reviewing, then we bring that, and we finalize the draft language. We bring that forward to the unions and talk to the unions about that, negotiate any kind of impacts that have to, that would have, the language would have to them. And then once that's finalized, then we move forward with finalizing the language and bringing it to council for approval.
And I will just share also, in every step of that way, lawyers are involved in the process as well, because we want to make sure we're staying within the bounds of what we can do as a city, what our limitations are, what our liabilities are, and like, how do we make sure we move forward with that? So this process, if, if you were to go ahead with this, this would be an extremely unusual process for us to go through and, and would take considerable legal review.
Thank you. Do you have another comment?
Just one other comment on it is, it would, it would likely take six to eight to 10 months to go through the process. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Nuova Kamina?
Thank you. Considering a shift in, in federal administration, and I understand that we do not have a crystal ball. We don't, we can't see what, what further changes are going to, to come. But we do know that within four days, there's been very swift action being taken. And I feel that, that this council, and we've already made it very, very clear, that we are steadfast in our values. I'm already anticipating that we're going to probably need to pivot with, with some things in the budget, not knowing what's going to be impacted from the federal and how that's going to impact us here at the local. And one of the things that I've been dedicated to coming into 2025 with the shift in federal administration is focusing on controlling the controllables and what is, what is going to be protecting us and our residents, our community here in Redmond. Hearing that this is going to, can go six, eight, 10 months, and anticipating the need to be able to pivot, I don't know if, I don't believe that this is going to be our, our focus.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Councilmember Nuova Kamina, for your thoughts. Thoughtful as always, and spurred a couple things for me. I'm, I'll be direct, kind of on brand, but I'll, I'll be direct, but I'm not going to support this proposal as it is brought forward today. And the reason being is it's a bit unfocused. There's a lot of things going on here. However, this has definitely inspired me to ask, ask a bit more question of this document that, quite frankly, the Personnel Manual is not a place I've spent a lot of time. But the lack of bereavement here for this pregnancy loss is a concern for me. And I understand from the administration that things that, when we have updates to the Personnel Manual, there's a process and it takes time. There probably are. If that is the case with our current bereavement leave, then there's probably a few other things that do need to be updated there, and that may be a worthy endeavor in and of itself. But I don't think it's in the approach that's being asked for today. When, I, I want to be clear that I, I wouldn't go so far as to, to call an action like this something that is not our priority and something that is a reaction to something going on in the federal government or at a change in another level of government. We at this council talk a lot about pay equity and what it takes to be a great employer and to be a competitive employer here in our region. And it looks to me like, I've been just informed through this, or made aware through this process and this conversation, that there probably is some modernization of some of the benefits here in the city that need to be addressed. Director Laird, we come to a conversation with you once a year, once every couple of years with, you know, what are the healthcare benefits going to be? And what is the, what are the main benefit packages look like? But these policy areas, we don't have as much of a window into. And I have a few questions now. I won't, like I said, I won't be supporting this item here tonight, but I am interested in that conversation in the future. And maybe that's something that, if the council maybe prioritizes it through the retreat or something like that next month, could be brought to committee for conversation, something like that. Thank you all for the thoughtfulness in this conversation.
Thank you. So what I heard there, it wasn't a direct proposal, but more a suggestion of something that potentially you may raise at the council retreat as, as a discussion to be elevated later? Okay, great. So in, in the sake of time... be elevated later. Okay, great. So in the sake of time, let's move to a vote on whether or not we'd like to move this item forward for legal review, which I assume is the next step based on this. Councilmember Anderson?
I heard from Councilmember Stewart that we'd like maybe to hear about it at the retreat.
As another option, and then legal review?
Can you clarify that?
Just to clarify my thought, we are going to have a, my understanding of the council retreat is that we will have our typical prioritization opportunity, and individual council members can bring forward ideas for consideration of the council, and things that move forward with a majority of the council are the things we choose to work on for the year. So my understanding is we are going to continue with that process as part of our retreat.
Yeah, so my understanding would be if someone wanted to bring up, we could decide in terms of prioritization, is reviewing the Personnel Manual in general as a study session or a committee item something we'd want to hear about as an alternative to necessarily making these particular changes?
My suggestion with that, and I didn't get called on, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
The, it sounds like the request from me, the proposer, would be to hold this until we have that conversation as council, then advance to legal review. In that way, we have that sort of agreement from council to advance any of the work. Unless everybody wants the legal review to come back and say that we can or cannot do this. Because the mayor also has executive authority to do an executive order if she wishes.
Yeah, I guess I would say anyone can bring up an idea at the council retreat, so I don't think we have to vote on whether someone will be able to bring up an idea at the council retreat. But whether, you know, the council is interested in having a future study session on the Personnel Manual, we could have that as the proposal tonight, that we could up or down on that, unless we just want to bring this back for discussion at the council retreat. But since we're having the discussion now, I also wonder if we should just take the vote on it. But we can also bring it up at the council retreat. It can come back up again, for sure, just in terms of the sake of time. I guess I would, because what you're saying is that you would suggest we decide if we're interested generally at looking at the Personnel Manual and then look at this. I would say on this particular proposal, it would be helpful to get some clarity tonight, so we don't have to come back to the same conversation.
Get some clarity on what you're saying. So you would like to vote on whether or not we advance it to a legal review tonight? Is that the correct way to understand?
Yes, I think that would be helpful. Other council members? I saw a nod from Council Vice President Forsyth. All right. I think we'll move, I think we should take a vote on whether we'd like to see a legal review on this particular language and move forward there. And then we'll leave it open if council members want to bring up a different question, which is really about whether we schedule some time to talk about the Personnel Manual. That can run up at the council retreat.
Mayor, Mayor Bernie? Yeah, I just, since you're having this discussion, I'll add a couple of other things that OMW mentioned. The attorneys did say that neurodiversity is already covered under the state definition of disability. And we do not check for socioeconomic or immigration status. In employment, there is an obligation to make sure people are eligible to work in the United States, and that's the only thing we ask people. So I just wanted to make sure those two things were out there, because those are some of the items that Councilmember Anderson had.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
My point in not supporting legal review was that we wouldn't spend money on legal review. And it sounds like it's already happened. So I, I, and I see the mayor would like to make a response, but I, we are planning to also continue to work on our hopper process at our upcoming council retreat, is my understanding. And so this would be one of those moments that feels a little squeaky for me in terms of items coming forward, because I was trying to do due diligence of not spending a dime that didn't, that didn't need to be spent, and knowing that we are bringing our council in-house and have a different cost of that in a few months, once that's up and hired. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mayor Bernie, I guess, can you clarify the difference of the legal review that you were referencing versus the legal review that's already been done?
Sure, this is a really light touch of legal review, just trying to understand the document and what we were looking for, so we would understand how to answer some of your questions tonight. Because usually you ask us a little bit about what would it be entailed. But he also did say that we, that their attorneys would go item by item and identify what's in state and federal law, and what adopting each item would require the city to do, and however that would be costly. So that was very high-level survey of what was here. And then if you wanted to do a deeper dive, what would it?
Thank you. Okay. And I'm going to close out discussion on this, just because, as I said at the beginning, I think with the hopper items, we seek to mostly get clarifying information on whether, on the things we need to know of whether we want to move forward to a deeper discussion on the specifics enclosed within the proposal. So I'll ask council, for those who are supportive of advancing this proposal to legal review and next review by the council, likely at a committee meeting, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing four hands, so I think this particular proposal won't advance, but as noted, there may be related proposals that come up in the future as we're brainstorming and prioritizing. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. I appreciate the intent of this proposal and the issues that you raised here. Other items for council talk time? Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. I wanted to follow up on our town hall last week. Is, I don't know if this is an appropriate place for feedback on the town hall, or if we're planning that for another time.
Go ahead.
Okay, awesome. Well, I thought it was great, awesome turnout, and really appreciated being there with you all. A few of the comments that I received afterwards, neighbors who are renters who expressed support, feeling supported by their city council and mayor, because we discussed some of the issues that are nearest and dearest to them. I was approached by two youth afterwards, who are seniors here in Redmond, and they, seniors in high school, and they expressed interest in a youth-centered town hall. And as we fleshed out that idea a little bit more, we thought kind of of the format similar to what we used last week, but flip who holds the microphone for the council and the city to do more listening. So I thought that was an interesting one. They also liked the idea of the town halls and round tables. I very much appreciate the feedback from the commissioner that I already referenced once earlier tonight. I just really love that sentiment around having these conversations and less focus on an exhibition. The one caveat to that, of course, that I would make is my comments earlier tonight about a possible themed community conversation around road safety, which I just think there's maybe something ripe there, and maybe we could come up with. But overall, really excited that we have now completed our second one. As we move forward into scheduling the rest of these for the new year, I do hope that we are able to move out of downtown for at least one of these conversations later in the year. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just say thanks to all the council members for joining for the town hall, sharing your thoughts. Thanks to Mayor Bernie for the facilitation. And one piece of follow-up that I heard from some community members and some questions from council members was just how we'll follow up on the questions we got, and in particular, the questions we might not have answered. So I'm hoping to follow up to be able to get that list of questions and look through to make sure that we have that follow-up with residents, and similarly to our last one, to be able to send a message out to those who attended, so that they know that they can also follow up with us one-on-one. So I'm kind of sorting through, and I haven't had a chance to connect with Vice President Forsyth about this, but the kind of the best way to follow up and make sure that everyone who came and took the time to ask us a question and come to the event felt heard and listened to. I think in general, it seemed like there were a lot of nods in the audience, especially when Councilmember Fields asked everyone to raise their hand if they liked, you know, felt the question was answered. We saw a lot of hands raised and heads nodding. And at the end, I had a lot of great feedback talking to community members. So, and then I think we will have on our agenda in short order to figure out what our next focus and format for council conversations is. As I mentioned that tonight as well, I'd just say to council members, maybe I'll bring it up at the next council talk time, be thinking about what you might prefer in terms of format, so we can coalesce around what we've done. And then council leadership can also brainstorm a couple ideas and bring them back for the council to consider. Other comments, questions? All right. Well, I will note that this upcoming week, we have an exciting event on February 1st, that's Saturday at 1:00 PM. We're going to be cutting the ribbon on our new electric fire engine. So I hope to see everybody there, and really just excited to celebrate with our community this amazing, groundbreaking achievement. And, oh, I see Council Vice President Forsyth has one more item.
Can you tell everybody where that's occurring?
Yes. City Hall, great. Yeah, I was just opening this up, yeah. And I believe there's a press event that the council was invited to on Thursday, so check that out on your calendar. It seems like more information is going to be following on that as well. So, related to something else.
If all goes as it's supposed to, on Thursday, there will be a very exciting announcement. That's what's happening on Thursday.
Okay, just letting council know to note that. Yeah, great. So with that, we'll close out the meeting. And if there's nothing for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.